I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on November 3rd, 2022. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have an amendment to tonight's agenda. I'm going to move that we amend item number six, which is the proclamation, and move it to after item two, the approval of our agenda and consent items. That's the way we can get the proclamation out of the way earlier before we go into the public recognitions and presentations, so.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have adopted the amended agenda and consent agenda. And so first up on our amended agenda is our new proclamations, our Veterans Appreciation Month. Get started down with Councilor Kumpel.
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high calling to serve and have helped protect and secure the United States of America at every turn. And whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service as selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And?
Whereas we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. And?
Whereas on Veterans Day, we salute those who have proudly worn the uniform of the United States of America and the families who have served alongside them. And we express our enduring gratitude both in words and in action for their service. And?
Whereas as many veterans face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations, we can ensure that those who have served their nation receive the resources they deserve. And?
Whereas through their commitment to freedom, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure. And the city of Lacey resolves that their sacrifice will always be remembered.
Now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as Veterans Appreciations Month in the City of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to recognize the value and sacrifice of our veterans and to actively support our local veterans and their families. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, November 3rd, 2022. Come up and accept this proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone in Lacey for your continued support of the 1-2 Stryker Brigade, making us part of your community. You have a longstanding history dating back to when it was the Arrowhead Brigade, 3-2 Brigade. And we've always had been part of the Lacey community. And I know, being a two-time returnee to here, both in this room and part of the Stryker Brigade, I know how important that relationship is. I'm Lieutenant Colonel David Stalker, standing in for Colonel Coleman, who's traveling back from Thailand right now. He wishes he could be here, but he also looks forward to meeting you guys in person when he lands and comes back. We're truly honored to represent a brigade. Well, we're truly honored that I represent a brigade that's being part of this community. And we're proud to be part of a city that shows so much support to our veterans and their families, with over 500-plus families and veterans that still live in this community. We hope that the partnership remains strong. We have no doubt that it will and that you continue your support to the veterans and their families that reside in this area. And as a token of our appreciation, I come bearing gifts. So Colonel Coleman, he has some coins here. And if you're familiar with a challenge coin, it's an opportunity to show that you're part of the Stryker family. Always be a part of the Stryker family. And then it gets your free pass and admission into the brigade headquarters if you guys want to come to work. Hey, thank you.
Do you need rings?
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And this is actually my second time having to do this proclamation.
Yeah.
I got an opportunity to do it four years ago. It's the only time I've had the pleasure of coming down here to the Lacey City Hall. But it draws back memories.
Great.
I'm pretty proud to be part of this team. Thanks for making us your community partner. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're very proud of our relationship with Joint Base Lewis McCord and of course the Stryker Brigade. And we look forward to many more years of celebrating together and just appreciate everything that they do for our community and for our country. So next up on our agenda is?
Picture, a group picture with them?
Sure, if we want. Can you do a quick group picture up front?
You guys have a stool, so I don't have to. There we go. There we go.
Next, I'm going to take it right here from the podium. Now, I've been thinking about this moment for a very long time, really going back to back when Lacey first came up with the idea of having a Spirit of Lacey Award. Former council member Ron Lawson said, you know, we have some amazing people in our community and we have amazing businesses, we have things that really set Lacey apart. We should come up with an award that recognizes these amazing individuals. And as we were thinking about this award, you started thinking about, oh geez, I can think of several people right away who is deserving of this award from day one. And one of those people that came to my mind right as we were passing this was Ruth. And Ruth, you know how much of a special place you hold in my heart, the love that you have for Lacey. You know, I've been now the longest elected member of this council and the longest-serving mayor in Lacey's history, and I haven't even come close, come close to doing what you've done for our community, not even close. And you've been giving back to Lacey for such a long time, and it truly has shaped us as a community. I just cannot imagine where we'd be as a community without you. So it's very fitting that on behalf of the Lacey City Council, Ruth, thank you for over 35 years of exceptional volunteerism within our community. Your dedication to Lacey is evident by your contributions and unwavering support in the community and through your active participation on multiple committees, nonprofit boards, community events, all focused on creating a better quality of life of residents of Lacey. As the founding chairperson of the Lacey Spring Fund Fair, you worked tirelessly to keep the event free for families by securing sponsorships to cover operating expenses. This community event has brought joy to countless children and families over three decades. And I know my daughter has grown up going to Lacey Fund Fair, as so many other families have as well. It's because of you and others who selflessly contribute your time and energies to Lacey that we enjoy the community that we have today. In recognition of your exceptional volunteerism, the City of Lacey bestows its highest honor, the Spirit of Lacey Award, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date. Ruth Kim.
My goodness. Okay, here I go. Mayor Ryder, council, be nice, Mayor Ryder, council members and staff, I am so honored to receive this award. I'm telling you, I don't do it for this recognition. I do it because it's the right thing to do. So I'm not going to take you down my path of volunteerism because there's too many stories to tell, but one thing I need to say is I've made some very good friends over the years, and they're still my friends. So thank you for my family, my extended family, and all my friends for being here tonight. I just thank you so much. And I would like to leave a message with you that I heard at a YMCA conference several years ago that really resonated with me. It is volunteering is the rent you pay for living in your community. So thank you so much.
We'll hold this stuff for you. If you come down, of course, we all want to shake your hand.
We have a presentation to do.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Love you. So we're going to do a presentation again?
So we have a quick presentation we're going to give.
Pause the show.
Are you going for the whole audience? You got a little presentation up there. Keep going.
Look at Dr. Colwell. Wow. So we're going to, we're going to actually just take like a 10-minute recess so we can go down and have some cupcakes and celebrate Ruth here a little bit. So it is, let's see, how about we come back at 6:25, 6:25, or recess till 6:25?
I underestimated the time needed for our break. Well, let's go 6:30. We'll recess till 6:30. Is there anyone here wishing to address the council? Seeing none, then we'll go into our next agenda item, which is a public hearing. And I'm going to open up this 2023 Revenue Source Hearing and turn it over to Troy Wu, our Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and members of the audience. We are here tonight to conduct the first of three public hearings required for our budget process. I'll go ahead and share my screen and get started. Okay, so like I said, this is the first of three required hearings. This particular hearing, we are required to conduct before setting our property tax levies. And the council is scheduled to do that at the next meeting on November 17th. But we'd like to cover quite a bit more. And in addition to property taxes, we have a vast variety of different revenues that help fund the various services we have for the city. So what you see before you are the eight main categories for general fund revenues. You could see that our proposed 2023 general fund revenues is just about $60.6 million for 2023. This is a decrease of about $6.5 million. You could see that the majority, majority of the increase is in that all other category. And the primary reason for that is we had significant one-time capital projects that we use reserves as well as transfers to different funds. So you're seeing a pretty large variance there. But what I'd really like to point out is the top four categories, taxes. You could see significant increases compared to the 2022 budget. I will point out that's not necessarily all growth, and there's certainly not, you know, a great deal of increases in terms of rates within taxes. But this is really more a function of having the trend analysis, having the budget catch up with the trend analysis. So we are seeing significant growth within those categories. I will cover each of these eight categories here in the following slides. Here's another way of looking at the same information in graph form as percentage of total general fund budget. You could see that sales tax, property tax, utility tax, BNO gambling and admissions tax. So all of our tax categories equal just over 60% of all general fund revenues. You could see in terms of service fees and permit fees coming in at right at 20%. Another way of looking at that is in terms of services that are directly received by our citizens, only 20% of those are recovered through fees. So let's look at property tax in detail. This is the reason why we're here for this hearing. Here you could see the 2023 projection. We have a general levy which covers, you know, the types of services that citizens are, you know, most identify with, police parks, streets. But we also have two different voter-approved bond levies. And you could see those, we have two parks levies, one that was issued in 2003, one in 2006. I will note that the 2023 bonds will be paid off next year. So we'll be down to one levy come 2024. When you do look at the general fund levy, we do have an increase of just under 460,000. Going into that is new construction and annexation adjustment, 1% increase, and a general fund levy, general fund refund levy amount goes into that. Now I'll share more details exactly how we got to those calculations. So here you have the 2022 Certified General Property Tax Levy for the City of Lacey at just over $8 million. Really, this is the starting point for all of our property taxes going forward. All adjustments are made based on that certified amount. So we do have four adjustments that are going into the 2023 number. The first is new construction. So we're going to be adding $184,831. These are thankfully taxes that we can add that are not subject to the 1% limit. This comes from new valuation that's being added to the assessment rules. For 2023, as it stands now, we're adding $209.89 million to the assessment rules. So we're still running very strong in terms of new construction and its impacts on property tax. The next adjustment is annexation. This isn't something we have every single year, but we've had a couple of significant annexations here in the last two years. So you could see that we're adding $180,944 for 2023. And that's based on new annexation valuation of $205 million. And then we have the 1% limit, which is $80,466. That's simply a 1% calculation on the current year levy, which is that $8,046,000, 2022 general property tax levy. And then we have the refund levy, which is $13,365. And I will point out, this is a new amount. This number was not included in the city manager's presentation from a couple of weeks ago. And as a reminder, the refund levy, these represent refunds, technical errors, granting of exceptions that happened throughout the end of 2021 and the majority of 2022. This didn't change the lawful legal limit the city could charge. So these are carried forward into the following year and spread out amongst the assessed valuation for the, for the city. So you could see when you take those four adjustments and add those to the 2022 levy, we have a projected 2023 levy of $8,506,218. I do like to show the history of our property tax. What's interesting is we've had 10 straight years of growth to property valuation. So every single year on this chart here, you could, that you're looking at, it represents growing assessed valuation. And there is a inverse relationship between the valuation changes to assessed valuation and the levy rate. So in our case, here in the last 10 years, assessed valuation has been increasing, which means the levy rate has been decreasing over this 10-year period. To really better illustrate the inverse relationship, I expanded out the levy information out by five years. So you're looking at 15 years' worth of levy history for this city. And it's really kind of interesting when you look at the last 15 years. You go back to 2009. Of course, that was the housing bubble, the beginning of the Great Recession. Properties were decreasing during that period. So from 2009 until 2013, we had valuation that was declining, which meant the rate was actually increasing. And it's really kind of interesting when you look at the last 15 years. You go back to 2009, of course, that was the housing bubble, the, the beginning of the Great Recession. Properties were decreasing during that period. So from 2009 until 2013, we had valuation that was declining, which meant the rate was actually increasing. But of course, between 2010 and 2011, we coordinated with the Lacey Fire District to, with a voter-approved annexation of Lacey sick limits into the fire district. And to help facilitate that, the city voluntarily reduced its property tax by about $4.7 million. So of course, we had a successful vote of that annexation. So Lacey did indeed decrease its property tax in 2011. And that's why you see that significant drop from about $1.90 down to $1.9. So since 2013, like I said, there's been 10 years of increasing property values, which you could see that line has been declining. What's really interesting when we look at 2023, the, at this point, the estimate for appreciation to existing properties is about 33%, so very significant. That's why you're seeing a pretty sharp drop in that levy rate. So I do want to spend maybe just a few moments illustrating how we calculate property taxes, or more accurately, how the county assessor calculates property tax. I think in general, when you look at property tax, the, the math is quite simple, but all of the rules and the logic behind it are not so simple. So I think it really is a confusing tax for citizens. And so I think it's, you know, we're spending a few extra moments here. I think I last went through this exercise maybe five years ago or so. So it's about time to come back and, and take a, you know, a little closer look at how assessed, assessed value and how that relates to the calculated levy rate. So this is a very simplified set of numbers. But it does represent a situation where assessed valuation is increasing. So that is exactly the same as the situation we're in, in reality. But of course, like I said, I used rounded numbers to make it a little more simple to follow. So here is really where the confusion starts. The city council, as it deliberates and considers property tax for the next year, the council will be setting the, the revenue limit. It doesn't set the rate. In fact, the rate is calculated by the county assessor in the following year. So we'll actually have our budget adopted before we even know what the lever rate will be for next year. I think most citizens, and I think logically, you would think that we would set the rate and the rate would be, you know, used for that calculation, but it's quite the opposite. So when we look at the revenue limit, as you know, there is a 1% per year growth limit on property tax. As I stated earlier, that does not apply to new construction, does not apply to the refund levy, does not apply to annexation additions to the city's property taxes. But so this is really, this illustration is really just simplified down to that 1%. So the highest lawful limit in any given year is the previous year's property tax levy plus 1%. And you could see that here in year one, we go from $1 million. And year two, when we add the 1%, we have $1,010,000. So there is where the 1% limit, that is how it's applied. It's not applied to the rate. And you could, you know, a little straight further here in the next couple of slides, how that even adds to the confusion to citizens as you think about property tax. So the other part of this relatively simple equation is assessed valuation. So assessed valuation is the tax base, so to speak. So again, using a very simplified approach to this illustration, let's assume that this is the city of Lacey assessed valuation. So in year one, we have $100 million. And in this scenario, we have a, we have assessed valuation growing by 10%. And again, what we're looking at for 2023 is much closer to 33%. So again, you have the pretty simple calculation. You have the $100 million plus 10%. And year two, you have a total assessed valuation for the city of Lacey of $110 million. So like I said, the math is actually quite simple. The equation is you take your, your, your lawful, your highest lawful limit for property tax, which in year one is $1 million. The lever rate is based on, every $1,000 of assessed valuation. So the equation is the revenue limit of $1 million divided by $100 million, which is divided by 1,000, and you end up with a levy rate of $10 per 1,000. So let's look at year two. Again, you take the 1% revenue limit, you end up with $1,010,000 as your law, highest lawful limit for property tax. You take the assessed valuation, which is 10% higher than the previous year, divided by 1,000. You end up with a lever rate of $9.18. And you could see when you look just at the lever rate alone, it makes basically no sense when it comes to thinking logically about a 1% limit. You just can't make the math work. So let's translate that to what a typical house owner will see in terms of property tax. Again, it's a relatively simple mathematical equation. You take the rent, the levy limit or levy rate that is established by the county assessor. You take the house valuation, which in this case is 100,000. And you again divide that by 1,000. So you end up with 100,000 divided by 1,000 times 10. You end up with property taxes due in year one of $1,000. So let's look at year two. It's the same mathematical equation. So you take the calculated levy rate of $9.18. You take assessed valuation plus 10% in year two. So you take $110,000 divided by 1,000 times $9.18. You end up with a tax bill of $1,010, which incidentally is your, your 1%. Just a couple of disclaimers within this. This really assumes that an individual home increases in value at the exact rate as the overall assessed valuation. I could tell you that is probably quite rare. But you know, I think for illustrative purposes, you know, I do hope this, you know, helps a little bit in terms of, you know, helping folks see, you know, where the 1% limit applies and how that translates to an individual home. So let's look at what a typical home in 2023 may experience in terms of property tax compared to the current year. So you have a, an average or median price home in 2023 of a half million dollars, $500,000. And you could see there at the bottom half of the chart, there, I have the levy rates, projected levy rates times the $500,000 in valuation. And when you take a look at 2022, it's basically 33% less. So we have a home in 2022 of $375,000. And you could see when we multiply out the, the levy rates for 2022 versus the projected levy rates for 2023, we have about a $6.54 increase for next year. So let's move on to sales tax. Sales tax is our single highest revenue source for the general fund. It represents about 26% of all revenue sources. This is a 10-year history for sales tax. This is, you know, very similar to a slide that the city manager presented at the last council meeting during his annual presentation. You could see very significant growth. You can also see how badly we projected what would happen during the COVID pandemic. Of course, when the pandemic started back in March of 2020, the city council and staff quickly acted and tried to, you know, really kind of figure out what was going to happen during the, the first few months of, of COVID. And everything at that point, of course, was shutting down. So we re-projected a significant decrease to sales activity. In fact, I believe the amendment that the council approved was a 30% decrease to sales tax. So that's why you see that 2020 adjusted column there. But we were quite wrong, thankfully. We saw, I don't think anybody really anticipated that the types of growth that we've seen in sales tax. And you could see in 2023, our projection is just under $16 million for proper, for sales tax. So I would like to share some details into how that projection was made and also share kind of what's been happening over the last year. And I apologize, some of the numbers are very small. So what you're seeing on screen here is the top 20 group categories for sales tax. There are about 100 different categories. Just for your information, we, back in October, we had about 8,400 unique taxpayers for sales tax. So quite a large number. When you look at the top 20 categories here on screen, that represents just under 92% of all sales tax collections. So I think this is a, you know, a very good representation of what's happening in, in sales tax. So far, year-to-date 2022, sales taxes are up about 6.4%. Year-to-date increase is about $515,000. So would like to share details of some of the individual categories. General merchandise retailers. This is the single largest source of sales tax for the city. We have a, just a slight increase. It's been actually, the, the variance has been falling throughout the year. We had a good holiday season, which has really turned into just kind of more, they're not obviously not declines because still, we're still collecting more sales tax than we did last year. But the rate of growth has certainly slowed. So again, 0.8% increase compared to last year. So looking at the next category, sporting goods, hobby and musical instrument books. You probably, I should probably comment back, you know, in the monthly sales tax reports that I provide to council. Back in May and June's activity, there was a kind of a reshuffling of the categories. So the sales tax categories here that you see are broken out by the North American industry classification system. It's really just a way to try to categorize consumer activity. But this, the sporting goods category is the one category I think that had the most significant change. In fact, it's, it's, it's to the point that I don't even think the comparison is really that valid. One of the, the main changes to this category, we used to have a category called all other miscellaneous retailers. That category no longer exists and it has been placed within this category. That category was significant enough, enough that all other miscellaneous retailers actually makes up two-thirds of this entire category now. Also impacting this category is a significant one-time activity that occurred in the May and June timeframe of this year. Definitely one-time in nature and the impact of that was over $300,000. So it's again, not a, not a real fair comparison when you look at this increase of 47.9%. What you see highlighted is the construction activity that's been occurring in Lacey. Very strong activity that's been occurring in 2022. This follows a down year of 2021. But these three categories as a whole are up about 17% year-to-date. And I think, you know, when we've seen the community and economic development presentations on all the development activities happening in Lacey, that should really come at no surprise. The next category is food services and drinking places.
Troy, we have a quick question. Go ahead.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so thanks Troy. 32% reduction from merchant wholesalers. Did, did we lose somebody or?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Actually, I could jump to that one right now. So the, this is a category that is often directly linked to development. So durable goods are defined, and I'm not going to get the exact definition, but durable goods are, are consumer goods that are consumed over a long period of time. And that's really just kind of a fancy way of saying equipment, as an example. So what we see with especially industrial and commercial development, we often see large systems. Think about computer systems, HVAC systems that go in separate from development. They often come in through this category. So it can be very volatile. And I think that's exactly what we're seeing here in 2022. We just haven't had that same level of equipment purchases related to development. Does that help council member Conklin?
Yes, it did. Thank you, Troy.
Great. So let's go back to food services. So you know, when we really think about the, the pandemic and, you know, all the safety measures that were in place, restaurants are the category that I, I think I had the most concern about. They were essentially shut down at the beginning of the pandemic. We saw a shift to those restaurants that had drive-throughs. We, we saw a shift to services like Uber Eats, curbside pickup. So this is a very resilient set of business owners out there. But this is a category that, you know, really took a hard hit from all of those precautionary measures that were in place. But we're seeing them come back very, very strong. So I'm glad to, to be able to report that. So we have just under a 12% increase. If we really kind of think back over the last three years of the pandemic, the restrictions really started to be relaxed in the second half of 2021. So I do think these numbers in terms of increases are going to start declining just because we're going to have more apples-to-apples comparison to, you know, more of a fully opened economy. But again, I'm happy to say that this is a, a segment of our economy that has recovered from the pandemic. Administrative services and support services, we have an increase of 18.2%. This is a, this is a category that's largely related to household services, landscaping, alarm, security services, and also online services as within this category. So think about streaming services, that type of thing that's coming into the homes. And, you know, of course, the pandemic has, has shaped that as well. So I think there has been a shift to more streaming, you know, types of entertainment, you know, as we were, as we were locked down and couldn't go out and about in the community to get that entertainment. I think people turned to this, this source of activity. So something new, I took a look at sales tax from a little bit different lens. And what you're seeing here on screen are the top five categories. And these, these categories, there's 25 categories total within the, the Lacey tax base. So those 100 or so group categories get summarized into these 25, or you're only seeing five categories, but 25 total categories. And but I, you know, I really kind of wanted to get more of a sense of what was happening in terms of the categories. It's really difficult to look at 100 different categories and try to summarize that. So what you're seeing is again, the top five, this represents about 85% of all sales tax collected in the city. And what is interesting here is retail trade is the top category. We're, we have an increase of about 4.3%. Of course, if we think about inflation being in that eight, eight and a half, nine percent range through, through much of 2022, you know, one could say that if prices and all these, within all these categories, you know, just had a straight line impact, we probably saw a decrease of the volume of sales that happened in Lacey. Construction, you could see 18.1% increase. I'm very consistent with what you saw on the previous slides. You see accommodation and food services increased 12%. Again, that's, you know, your restaurants making a, a strong comeback. But I do want to illustrate and maybe make a, a quick adjustment to retail trade. I mentioned earlier that there was a, a single taxpayer earlier in the year that had a pretty significant impact. Of course, not allowed to share any, any details about the taxpayer or, or anything like that. You know, we need to protect those privacies. But you know, that impact was in excess of $300,000. So I took out exactly $300,000 in a previous slide. And you could see that it actually ends up with a exactly $300,000 in a previous slide and you could see that it actually ends up with a decrease to retail trade of 0.4%. So you know, this is something we'll obviously keep a very careful eye on as we watch the economy evolve. Right now, it's it's very volatile and there's a lot of kind of mixed messages within all the different indicators within the economy. So, you know, obviously we'll we'll keep a close eye on this and make sure that we're able to get in front of the council and indicate any sort of change that might be might be warranted. So do you want to take a kind of another glance at general merchandise? Again, it's our biggest single category for sales tax. So it does warrant kind of a another look. This is a 20 year history of general merchandise sales tax. You could see in, we've more than doubled in that 20 years. You know, fairly simple explanations. We had a great deal of commercial development occur between 2002 and 2007. We had Galaxy Drive developed, you know, the Marvin and Martin development. We have the corporate center down in South Lacey all developed during this timeframe. So we really reset the commercial base during that period. Then, of course, we had the the housing bust and the Great Recession, and we had very little growth to any revenues for you know, six to seven year period. And you could see that during the 2000s. And then you could see the impacts that that COVID had. Like I said, we we couldn't have been more wrong about the impact to sales tax because of the pandemic. And this, this slide here really illustrates the pandemic's impact on on sales tax here in Lacey. You could see that there is very little change to the per capita general merchandise stores, sales tax generation. So from 2012 at $41.63, there is very little change way up until 2020 where we amended the year at $41.78 per capita. And then, of course, we had the pandemic, we had, you know, a continued growth in population and then we suddenly jumped up to almost $45 per capita. Obviously, the the shopping habits of our population changed. And I think a lot of that was on what I'll call forced local shopping. We, just by the safety precautions that were in place, we weren't allowed to move about like we had in the past. We had a massive shift to teleworking to keep employees safe. So, you know, people were, I think, doing a lot more of their shopping here locally. If you do look in, in addition to that, if you look at our general merchandise stores, they're more of the the staples of things that that folks buy. There's not a lot of discretionary purchasing that happens within this category. So definitely a shift to, I think, that, you know, the more stay at home habits that occurred during the pandemic. I normally try to shy away from making projections on what's going to happen in year end sales taxes, but the curiosity got the best of me as well. So I did do a kind of a what if in terms of general merchandise stores for 2022. So what you're seeing here is obviously added a 2022 column. We had significant population growth because of annexations. So I took and extrapolated out where we're where we are today in terms of collections out for the remaining five months of 2022. And I simply added 0.8%, which is the year to date increase for the category. And you could see that this category in terms of our per capita generation is coming down to more of that historic level. So I think that's an indication and it I think it is consistent with what we know about what's been happening in terms of our safety measures. People are headed back to the workplace. People are able to move about and, you know, have more normal daily lives. I do want to take a look in construction. Construction is our most volatile area of sales tax. So again, you have a 20 year history of of construction generated sales tax on screen. You could see it kind of kind of mirrors what we've seen in terms of commercial growth in terms of general merchandise. But you could see the impacts in the 2006 to 2008 timeframe of our single family home explosion that we had. You could see that what happened to the construction industry during the Great Recession there in the 2010s. We were, you know, really kind of bouncing along the bottom, so to speak. And then you could see what's happened here very recently in the last five years. We've had significant multifamily development. We've had significant commercial and industrial development. If you would have asked me five years ago, I would have thought we would have been very difficult to match the 2007 year when we built all those homes, but you could see the new construction has exceeded that peak, you know, four years in a row now. So really the question as we look forward is, is what will construction do as we start to reach build out? Let me think about the available lands in Northeast Lacey for commercial industrial expansion, you know, those are definitely finite in nature. The real question is, you know, where does construction fall? Does it fall down to the 20 year average as a fall even further than that? So, you know, again, this will be something we watch very carefully. One of the best ways to try to predict what construction is going to do is look at what's been happening in our building permit activity. And what you have here on screen is, you know, about a 12 year history of one, the number of permits that have been issued, and you could see that in the red line versus the valuation, which is the blue bars and kind of a cross cross index chart there. And again, you could see the what's happened in the last five years. So in 2016, we had the first apartment complexes built since 2008. So we went, you know, eight years without a single multifamily development. 2016 was also the largest year for the North Public Schools Bond Projects, the the voters approved back in 2015. In 2018, we had, you know, additional multifamily development permits come in. 2019, again, continuing with the multifamily permits, but we also started to see industrial building permits come in at this time. So this obviously is a direct correlation with what we saw on the previous slide in terms of sales tax generated from your construction. But then we look at where we're at, where we're at year to date 2022. Now we're at 104 permits and this is through October 31st. And we have permit valuation of 50.2 million dollars. This is, you know, significantly lower than what we've seen in the past, certainly the past five years. If you just do a straight line calculation on that 57 million, we end up with about $69 million in permit valuation. But, you know, as you've seen the reports from community and economic development of all the different projects that are out there. I think this is at this point, maybe just a maybe just a stalling of those permits coming in. But we, you know, we've definitely seen a bit of a stall in permit activity. I think it really mirrors with the increases to the Federal Reserve rates that have been occurring here. Of course, we just had our another 0.75% increase just yesterday, which was the fourth in a row at 0.75%. So, you know, as we talk about, you know, the cost of borrowing money increasing and that's that's definitely going to have an impact on on development looking forward. Hey, let's look at some of the other sources of revenues from the general fund, utility taxes. This is a another significant increase being projected for 2023, a total overall increase of about $1.3 million. Really being really leading the way is electricity. So what goes into these calculations are trend analysis, our growth projections, and we try to anticipate what rate increases are out there. There are significant rate increases for natural gas and electricity that are before the UTC. I don't think we'll see any final rulings on that until the December timeframe, but in the case of electricity, I think it's they're pretty close to double digit increases being proposed by PSC. I would like to point out that I'm not going to call a reversal of a trend, but we definitely have at least a one year projection of increase in telephone utility tax. This has been an area that has been declining steadily, in fact, kind of alarmingly steady since really the, you know, beginning of 2010. I'm only showing a 10 year look back here on the slide, but you could see in 2014, we collected about $1.25 million. You could see the steady decline. We are projecting about 555,000 for 2023, which would be the first increase in many years. And this really has to do with the Internet Tax Freedom Act from the late 90s. It's kind of hard to imagine a time where the internet was struggling as a business. But at that time, Congress really wanted to preserve and provide some advantages to the internet for commercial reasons, for educational reasons, for informational reasons. Really wanted to make sure that internet was a thriving business. So there was a 10 year moratorium on all taxes from state and local governments on the use of internet. That act was it was extended a number of times, but went into permanent law and law in February of 2016. So from here, unless something changes, state and local governments will not be able to tax the internet. And how this directly relates to telephones is the the smartphone. If you think about, well, at least if I think about my use of smartphones, I rarely use it to make a phone call. I use it for the internet. I use it for email. I use it for text messaging, which is all data or internet activities, which is not taxable. So if you think about what's really happened since, well, really since the late 2000s. And I think the iPhone, the first iPhone was sold in the middle of 2007. I think in 2007, there was about 1.5 million or so iPhones sold. Last year, there were 242 million iPhones sold. So you could see there's just been a tremendous shift from landline phone use to smartphone use, which it's hard to even call it a phone anymore, but they're really more like little internet machines that we all carry around. So that's really had a dramatic effect on on these utility taxes.
Troy, quick question on that. And any particular reason for that uptick for 23?
I can't really pinpoint it. It's it's really trend analysis. I don't know if it's related to annexation. So one major change when we annex a, you know, a section of Lacey, utility taxes are not something that counties can assess, but cities can. So that is an area that does change for those citizens who live in those annexed areas. So I do think that is definitely playing a part of that, but I really can't pinpoint the exact dollar amount. But, you know, I think population increase definitely impacts that as well. So we'll see, like I said, it's it's one year. We'll see if it the the trend changes or you know, we find a little more stability within this category, but hopefully so.
Troy, can you go back to the last slide that shows the project? Yeah. How is those projections meeting up to what we thought we were going to receive when we did, when we do our net analysis? Like, you know, when we are are looking you know, over over the years, is 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 this going up more than what we thought it was going to go up? Or, I mean, or is this? Is there any trend here?
Typically, but I will say that so far in 2022, we've seen significant increases. You know, in in utility tax. You know, again, I think the annexation pieces certainly impact that. You know, but these are also categories that are highly impacted by the weather. Electricity, natural gas, obviously, you know, hot summers, hot dry summers drive up the cost of electricity because of air conditioning, cold, wet winters, people turn their, you know, using their heat more.
Sure.
You know, and you know, it's 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 really a function of what happens out there. That's that's kind of difficult to project.
And where does the and where does the the electricity and natural gas utility tax go into what fund?
It all goes into the general fund. So we use that for, you know, general services.
Okay.
You're probably remembering back that we used to transfer 1% of utility tax to the park and open parks and open space and 1% to transportation. We did that as by matter of practice to, you know, for, you know, obviously investment into the community and maintenance of our our roads and and things like that. But, you know, as as it's been tougher to balance our budgets, we've we've kept all those utility taxes within the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, so looking at other taxes, which consists of BNO tax, business and occupation tax, emission tax and gambling tax, again, significant increases being projected for 2023. About a $535,000 increase for BNO tax. It's really follows the same trend line as sales tax with one distinct difference being BNO tax does for the most part tax the service industry, which is not always the case. In fact, most cases is not in in terms of sales tax. Emissions tax, we have $168,000 increase. That's somewhat misleading because we're still below the pre pandemic emission tax level, which was $225,000. Gambling tax, we're projecting a 400, almost $404,000 collection rate. This is an area that has fully recovered from the pandemic. You could see the pre pandemic levels were about $395,000. Looking at state shared revenues, we have an increase of about $108,000. These are distributed on a per capita basis. For the most part, these don't change much from year to year in terms of the amounts that the state does share with the local governments, but Lacey's population has been growing at a faster rate than the rest of the state. Service fees, we have a projected increase of just 100, under $357,000. Two of the major areas of change are interfund engineering and parks maintenance charges. We have an increase of just just over 329,000. These are charges that the expenses are borne by the general fund, but they're performed on the behalf of the street department, on behalf of the utilities. So we do charge out for those services. Indirect costs, that is more of an overhead rate that we charge the utilities for the general support of those those functions. I would like to point out that parks and recreation program fees, we don't have any change. We we were anticipating that we'd be fully recovered in 2022, but that hasn't been the case yet. We are still running behind pre pandemic levels for recreation activities, but we are hoping and anticipating that we will return to pre pandemic levels next year. And then the getting towards the last category, so the general fund, we have all other revenues. This is a kind of a broad collection of everything else. We have an overall decrease of about $11 million. We had significant budgeted use of reserves for capital projects, one time projects. You know, when you think about the investment in the Great Kyo Community Park, the police station, the improvements we're making at the rack, you know, are just a few examples of that. We do have lower transfers. And we have in 2022, we had the kind of the final completion of the improvements that are made at the Veteran Services Hub. One bright spot to the actions of the, you know, the Federal Reserve is interest rates are going up. So we have significant increases projected for investment interest for 2023. So just under 400 and we're just over $466,000. Looking specifically at beginning cash, I kind of alluded to this from at the previous slide, we did have a pretty significant use of reserves for one time projects in 2022. I will say that we'll probably have I will say that we'll probably have a lot of carryover into two thousand and twenty two. So when you look at our budget numbers, they're probably going to be higher. You know, the supply chain has been, I don't think, I don't think there are very many areas of what we're trying to accomplish as a city that haven't been impacted by the supply chain issue in terms of projects, even purchase of equipment's been extremely difficult. So looking at two thousand and twenty three, I do want to point out that in terms of ongoing operating and maintenance costs, we do have the budget of the use of about one point eight million dollars for those ongoing costs. These are identified reserves. These are committed reserves by the council. So these are planned expenditures and used reserves. So I certainly don't want to raise any alarms about the use of reserves. So before I move on to utilities, kind of just want to talk, you know, high level considerations in terms of revenues for the general fund. We do need to keep in mind that the Federal Reserve is planning and they're deliberately trying to slow down the economy. Their main goal is to bring high inflation under control. And they reiterated that fact just yesterday by saying that they are going to stay the course until inflation is, you know, reaches their target of two percent. So at this point, the indicators are the Federal Reserve will continue to try to slow down the economy. Obviously, we've, you know, there's hardly an industry out there, local government or otherwise, that hasn't been dealing with workforce challenges and supply chain issues. So, you know, I think the economy is going to continue to kind of have that volatility built into it. And then looking, you know, kind of out into the future, you know, my big question is, you know, how much of it is sustainable? Two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one had a lot of federal stimulus, a lot of economic support within the economy, where we are returning to normal pre pandemic activities. We're starting to see that in our numbers. So, you know, we'll obviously keep a close eye on revenues as we move forward. And again, I hate to, you know, sound like a broken record, but, you know, we do have a planned economic slowdown. And the real question is, is the slowdown preferable to the problem? You know, which could be, you know, sending us into recession. So can the Federal Reserve navigate that soft landing, so to speak, as we look forward? So let's look at transportation and then we'll close this with utilities. Transportation, one of the more significant sources of income, certainly as of late, has been real estate excise tax. This is a half a percent tax on all real estate transactions. We do have a two million dollar projection for next year. The last five years or so, it's been running about double that. We've brought in about four million per year in real estate excise tax, but certainly taking a conservative approach in looking forward in terms of what may happen to development, what's happening in terms of home sales, you know, definitely slowing down because of increased mortgage rates. Motor vehicle fuel taxes, the other significant source for transportation. We do have an increase of about sixty one thousand dollars in motor vehicle excise tax or motor vehicle fuel tax, sorry. What's really kind of interesting here is this, again, is very similar to other state shared revenues. It's distributed on a per capita basis. But we do see a little bit of an increase just because fuel use has been going up. It did take a little bit of a decrease there during the pandemic as people were, you know, working from home and not traveling nearly as much. So we do see a little bit of increase just because of the amount of fuel being used as increasing out there. I do want to mention the point two percent sales tax that the voters of Lacey approved in terms of the transportation benefit district funding. The projection for two thousand and twenty three is just under three point five million dollars. So looking at utilities, we spent a great deal of time talking about utility rates and long term projections for rates last year. We've already had a couple of conversations with the council and finance committee in terms of what our rate projections and what our recommendations are for two thousand and twenty three. We are staying the course in terms of those long term projections for rates. So the proposed one year rate increase for two thousand and twenty three for water is five point two five percent. Sewers residential rate proposal is nine point five percent increase. For stormwater residential, it's four point five percent. And then I've listed a lot here on screen, even though the city council doesn't establish that rate, but the law board has approved a three percent rate increase for two thousand and twenty three. I do want to share a little information on the commercial side. The mayor pointed out correctly that we don't spend enough time talking about the impacts of utility rates on our commercial customers. So I do want to share that information with the public. It's a little harder to determine what an average commercial or multifamily customer might use. So I really just wanted to show the the rate tables themselves and kind of compare the differences between the two. I mean, you could see group one, that is customers that are residential or irrigation customers. There are four tiers of rates. So you have the base rate and then four different tiered usage rates. And then group two, which is multifamily and commercial accounts. Very similar, they pay in a tiered rate fashion as well, but they only have two tiered rates. So they have a base rate, which is the same as group one, and then just the first two tiers. So when we talk about a five point two five percent rate increase for water rates, that is a straight across the board increase. I mean, you could see in terms of the table for commercial, it's, you know, to the tenth or to the thousandths of a penny, the same as our residential customers. I think the question that may come up is why are there more rates? Why are there more tiers in the residential table? And that's really because of how, it's a function of our peaking use of water. So for our water system, we have to build a system for the peak use, which happens to be the summertime months. And that peaking occurs within the residential customer base. That's where we see the majority of our fluctuation of water use. You go from a very low winter time water use for residential customers to, you know, multiple times that used during the summer because of irrigation. Most residential accounts do not have separate irrigation meters. So because the peak draw on water generation and usage in the summer falls over than a residential category, that was the area that was targeted in terms of water conservation. So that is why you see kind of that steeper curve for consumption reduction. Something very similar in stormwater rates, you know, we do have a makeup of, you know, residential customers and commercial customers within the stormwater rate structure. You could see the first two rate categories, single family and duplex for stormwater. And then we have, you know, seven different categories for commercial based on how much impervious service, surface area that a commercial account may have. So you could see just a kind of a different structure, but again, it is a, you know, across the board, in this case, four point five percent adjustment to stormwater. I don't have a slide for sewer, but the rate is exactly the same for residential customers and commercial customers. The difference being a commercial sewer customer is really based on their water consumption and then ends up just being a factor of an equivalent residential unit. So I think the example that the city manager gave during his presentation is if you have a single family home and versus a restaurant, a restaurant may use twenty times the water as a residential unit and they'll pay twenty times the sewer rate or sewer amount each month for that same service. We do like to show the comparison of utility rates to our neighboring jurisdictions. These are, it's really more of a comparison of the two thousand and twenty two rates. I mean, you could see that we have the two thousand and twenty three for Lacey, the proposed rates included there is comparison. So as I close my comments on revenues, I do want to point out the next steps for the city council. You're currently scheduled to consider five different actions related to utility rates and property tax, and you are scheduled to do that at your next meeting on November seventeenth. So with that, I'll turn this back over to you, council, for any questions you may have.
Great. First, I'll turn to the public. Is there anyone wishing to testify on this revenue hearing from the public? I don't see anyone online either. Then I'll turn it over to council. Is there any questions for this council? Well, then I just have one quick comment, Troy. If you go back to our city owned utility rate and what the expected increase, I know I'm putting you on the spot. This is my twelfth revenue hearing I've been through from the city of Lacey. And for the past twelve years, that the rate that the city of Lacey charges its utilities has stayed the same, six percent. And yet, and during that same twelve year period, we have raised our utilities for everyone else like a considerable amount. This year alone, you're seeing a four and a half increase, nine point five, five point two five. Obviously, this is something I think that needs to be addressed a little bit. I don't think it is necessarily fair that we continue to artificially keep our, what we charge ourselves for utility rate while we're asking our businesses and our homes and residents and everyone else, we increase their utility rates every year. I don't know what the right number should be for, you know, I'm at, you know, six percent is what we've done all this, you know, for as long as I've been here. But obviously, our general fund supports our city and the majority of the services that is our residents and our visitors and businesses, all the services that we use, it's a big deal. And so I think preserving our general fund and seeing a small inflationary rate when it comes to what we charge ourselves for on the utility side makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know what that does to the numbers since we have never discussed it. I'm just putting it out there and wondering what your thoughts are on it. I know you've been in jurisdictions where they widely change their utility rates based on what their budget looks like. I'm not saying let's go that far, but what I do, what I do think is six percent, you know, twelve years ago and six percent today doesn't make a lot of sense when we've seen inflation go everywhere else. So I'm just, what's your two cents there?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's an area that the councils discussed in the past. If you think back to our discussions about our six year financial planning, that was certainly an area that we discussed in terms of the council's ability to increase rates. And that is one of the very few areas that's left remaining in terms of council authority in terms of rate increases for taxes is specifically utility tax and on those city owned utilities. You know, as an example, telephone utility tax, there isn't any more statutory authority for the council. It's capped at six percent. But it's certainly, I think, I think it's a tool that the council should, you know, still consider in the future. Really taking a look at, you know, I would say we should preserve it to help us preserve future service levels. I don't think we're there yet. Well, I, you know, I appreciate your thought. I think we're able to, you know, maintain our budget, maintain service levels, you know, we're able to sustain, you know, our employee count. So I would think that, you know, at that time, when we started to get to that point where we were maybe considering having to do a reduction in service, that the council should take a look at potential.
I'm just curious of what that does for the general fund. Say if it went from six, our current six percent to, you know, six and a quarter, just a small, small increase to keep up with inflation. You know, it just, I hate to have just another year go by where this isn't, we just don't, I'd like to see that what the number is. And I don't know what that number is, you know, what it does to the budget.
Yeah, to really stretch from my memory at this point, but I want to say that one percent, for every one percent increase on the city owned utilities is about three hundred and fifty thousand per year.
Okay.
But I could certainly look at that number and present it back to the council.
Sure, and we have some time between now and then we adopt the budget. I just, I feel like with inflation being so high right now, and we've raised it every place else, to not take a look at at least a small increase right now, I think we're not doing service to our overall general fund and being, you know, somewhat, in this case, fiscally conservative because we have to protect those revenues. And that's one thing we just have not done at all is, you know, keeping that rate the same all these years. When inflation's gone up so much, it just doesn't seem fair when we've raised utility rates every place else. You know, this is my, just my two cents. And but it's hard to see what it actually does to the budget without, you know, seeing a couple of different numbers, you know, six and a quarter, six and a half, something like that. And maybe we can talk about, and maybe we do something, maybe we don't, but it's just, it's on the top of my mind right now.
Yeah, certainly I could calculate that out and bring that up before the council at the next hearing.
Great. Is there anything else? I'm going to now close this revenue hearing for the revenue source hearing for two thousand and twenty three budget. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is a referral from the hearing examiner, the lift station number three replacement.
Good evening, council. Today I am here before you seeking council action on the hearings examiner recommendation for the conditional use permit for lift station number three replacements. The Lacey Community and Economic Development Department received a conditional use application to replace existing wastewater, to replace a existing wastewater lift station number three due to age. It's our oldest existing station in the entire city, built in nineteen sixty nine. The replacement is due to aging equipment, limited site access, and the shoulder located in shoulder right of way causing limited site access and safety issues for city operations, maintenance crews, and permit confined space entry. The work will include an electrical building and standby generator. The site is roughly point two two acres that is relatively flat in a residential neighborhood. It has paved access and will have a perimeter fence to restrict public access. Mr. Andrew Reeves from Sound Law Center, acting in his capacity as hearings examiner for the city of Lacey, conducted an open record hearing on August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty two. The hearing was held as a Zoom webinar and allowed public testimony. All hearing and notices provided information necessary to the public as interested parties to attend a virtual hearing. City staff and applicant, oh, city staff, the applicant and members of the public provided testimony and exhibits relating to the project at the examiner's consideration. The record before the hearings examiner includes the economic development staff analysis, application materials, technical reports and studies, comments from city staff, public agencies, one email or letter from the public. To note on that, it did come in slightly after the fact, so it was not read at the hearing, but was taken into the record for the hearings examiner consideration. Testimony from the open public record and including staff reports from the applicant, city staff and their representatives. Zero members from the public attended. Any questions on the items so far? It's not a super exciting one compared to the budget, but the hearings examiner has recommended approval on it. Other than that, I am happy to answer questions regarding the staff report or hearings examiner recommendation.
Can I get a motion, please?
I would move approval of the hearing examiner recommendation of lift station number
number three replacement, number twenty-one dash three eight three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
What will happen to this parcel afterwards?
They are replacing the current existing lift station there. They're building a new one to have better access, set back to the site, but it was prior to it, an existing single-family home that was demolished before the conditional use permit came in. The existing facility that's on the site, it's not going to be fully removed, but it is going to be fully decommissioned. They will be placing landscaping around it and all our development standards to go with it.
They look pretty good around the city. I, you can see them around, and you can see where we've done this before, the city of Lacey always does a really good job with them.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
This is a conditional use permit, so I do have a couple of questions for the council.
You go for it.
Council's well-versed in the quasi-judicial process. The hearing examiner here has made a recommendation for the council's consideration, and council will either approve it, modify it, or deny it. But the appearance of fairness doctrine does apply here, so I will ask council generally as a whole if any council member has any personal interests that would be affected by either the approval or the denial of this application.
I do not.
And so does any council member, has any council member had any ex parte communications about this particular project? Now, the applicants, the city, so obviously, there's been some communications with members of the city, but has there been any ex parte communications specific to this project?
I have not.
And then finally, is there any reason any council member could not be fair and impartial in rendering a decision on this matter?
There's, there's not.
Thank you.
With that, we do have a motion and second to approve the hearing examiner's recommendation for lift station number three replacement. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was an easy one. So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report, and I do have a couple of recommendations. We've been down on our, our planning commission, members down on planning commission for a little while now, and so it's been one of those things where it's just been a weird time with advertising, getting people interested, and, you know, it's just been a, quite the little process. Usually, when we're, we're down a, a planning commission member, it's like we're, we can get replaced really quick. In this case, we, we do, we have had opening for a bit, and so we do have two very qualified members that are people who I've, I've brought forward. One, we already know, Kathy Mercia, and I think she's here online on Zoom call, and we can bring her in. Kathy has been on our planning commission before, and, and so this will be another term that she will be giving back to the city of Lacey, and I know she's excited about that. And then Judith Doyle is here as well, and if you would like to come up, maybe just introduce yourself real quick to the full council?
Yes. Good evening. It's really nice to be here. I'm Judy Doyle, and I was really interested in volunteering for this opportunity because one of the reasons we chose to make our home in Lacey is because of the way the community's set up. You have, we have recreational space, protected space, lots of commercial conveniences with restaurants and stores, and then really nice neighborhoods. And each of the neighborhoods really have their own identity and, and feel to them. So it was a very deliberate choice for us to move here to Lacey, and I know what good can come of volunteers that come together with the support of the structure and the resources to continue to make good decisions for the future growth, and I really wanted to be a part of that. So I appreciate your consideration of, of my application.
Great, thank you. Kathy, do you want to say a few words?
Sure, just really excited to be back on the commission. It's, was always one of my favorite things to do in the evening, so I'm really happy to be back. So thank you very much.
Great. So it's my motion that we appoint Judith Doyle to her first term on the planning commission, and that we reappoint Kathy Mercia to her second term on the planning commission. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
This is one of those easy ones, too, like the easiest decision in the industry decisions.
Yeah.
To serve with Kathy on the planning commission, she's a great person in the community. I look forward to getting to know you, and, and thank you for your service.
Great.
Soon, soon to be term, more than likely.
Well, the planning commission does so much for the city, and so we really, really thank you, both of you, for giving your time back to this community. It really means a lot. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to appoint these two to the planning commission. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good seeing you, Kathy.
You too, thanks.
So next up, under my mayor's report, I'm gonna report out on the city manager recruitment committee, and we have met twice already. We researched over eight recruitment firms and decided to interview three of them. The interviews actually happened this past Tuesday, and they lasted about an hour apiece. The, the three firms that we interviewed were GMP Consultants, which is based in Issaquah, and SJR, which was like really the largest of the firms, and the city has worked with them on, on several different occasions, including our current HR search, human resource search, and then Prothman, which is another company that's based here in Western Washington. And all three were very qualified, and they're all similarly priced for this service between eighteen and twenty-five thousand dollars for their services plus qualified expenses. But the committee unanimously determined that we would like to enter in contract with GMP Consultants. We just feel like they're gonna be a really good fit for the city of Lacey. Greg, it was the main lead the last time we went through this process and selected Greg as our city manager. He, he knows our history very well, going all the way back to when he was the city manager, coming on board for the first time within a short period of time with Greg, which was really interesting. So he's really known, been around and understand the city of Lacey going back into the, you know, early nineties. And so we just feel like he understands Lacey's culture and, and knows where, where we've been as a city and where we're going, where we're doing, that we're a leader now, you know, in Thurston County. And he's also the one responsible for taking Scott away from us as well, so there's, there's a little bit of payback on this as, as we go through the process. But we, he was very enthusiastic, and he is our, was our unanimous choice. So can I get a motion to authorize our current city manager to enter into a contract with GMP Consultants to start this process of hiring our next city manager?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any, any discussion? Is there any other information you'd like to know? Once we go, enter into this contract, the, the next step here is, is we're gonna create a, really a profile of what we're looking for, for our next city manager. What that will include is interviews that will be set up with every city, our, our full city council to hear from us individually what we're looking for, for our next city manager. They'll also do some interviews with key staff, and we maybe even pick out maybe some members of our community, like Ruth Weigelt, to, to do some interviews, and so we can prepare that profile. I also have a, a quick outline of what we're thinking this is gonna look like in terms of, of a timeline. But, you know, according to what he proposed to us, I mean, we're talking about interviews down to the final interviews in, in March. And so that's a really accelerated, I mean, we, we have saved months and months of time by, by being as, as quick as we have been on, on the, the interview committees and, and getting to this process right now. So I think we have, we're, we're set ourselves up really, really well to make this transition. Of course, the holidays are, you know, throws a little bit of kink into, into this, but we have, looking at that timeframe, I think we, we've accounted for it. So, but with that, there's a motion, a second. Is there any other, anything else? Then all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there, is there anyone opposed? And that motion carries. I will send out to the rest of the council that proposal that Greg gave us, just so everyone else has it, and you can take a quick look at it. And I, I want to thank Councilor Greenstein and Councilmember Vasquez for, for getting us through this process as quickly as we have, and I really appreciate being in on the interviews with you guys. Okay, now, next on our agenda is.
Standing?
Standing, standing general committees?
Finance.
And first up on standing general committees is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met back in, in the September. We obviously just went through our twenty-twenty-three revenue and expenditure estimate, so I, I won't go through all that since we've, we've, we've had that covered. But the other agenda item we talked about was an update to our credit card policy. Staff identified the city's travel process could be more efficient by incorporating the use of city-issued credit cards for travel expenses. And so one of the big things that we're looking at, and it's funny how far we've come, you know, we, we didn't even have a credit card policy or issued credit cards to most of our staff till, till very recently. But one thing that we realized is that with the cost of everything else, the, the limit of a thousand dollars is just wasn't really cutting it. And so that is gonna be lifted from a thousand to twenty-five hundred, and then also for minor equipment purchases from five hundred dollars to increase it to a thousand dollars, and just have some, some other housekeeping changes within the policy. And that is my report. Next up is the Land Use and Environment Committee.
Okay. Our committee met on September the twenty-seventh, and we had presentations from Rick Walk and Hans Shepherd from our Community and Economic Development Department. We had a report on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Implementation of Residential Energy Efficiency Program from Hans. This program was introduced earlier this year and focuses on ways to improve the energy efficiency of existing housing stock within the city of Lacey. And significant emphasis, emphasis has been placed on reducing residential energy consumption. So in collaboration with the Thurston Regional Planning Council, our staff is conducting a gap analysis of existing programs, which include areas of overlap, programmatic gaps, barriers for residents and homeowners. And we hope that this is going to show, enable us to better allocate the limited resources we have while avoiding redundancies. We also heard about the Energy Efficiency Boost Program and Home Energy Assessment Program through Puget Sound Energy, a low-income weatherization program through the Community Action Council, and unfortunately, this was disconnect, discontinued in twenty seventeen, the in-home energy assessments programs through Thurston Energy. That happened because of lack of program awareness and application requirements and, and other, other things. We also got an update on the quasi-judicial permitting process. This is, came from Grant Back, our Planning and Development Services Manager, and this was based on the last work session that council had, and the staff has prepared an ordinance and a staff report for council consideration at an upcoming meeting. The three options that will be presented to us are to make decisions ourselves for land use decisions. We can be the appellate body at the local appeal of a hearing examiner's decisions, or the hearing examiner's decision can be final, final and only appealable to court. So we will be focusing on that at a later meeting, and that's that report.
Thank you. Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee met October fourth, and we, we reviewed another possible calming device, traffic calming device, this time on fifty-seventh in the Lake Point slash Thornberry community neighborhood over there. The, the residents would like to entertain, you know, putting a traffic calming device down that stretch, there's, it's probably about a quarter mile, and there's, there's nothing there to stop people from speeding. So staff presented two possible scenarios for the neighborhood boundary. So scenario one includes sixty-nine parcels within the boundary, and scenario two includes only thirty-three parcels. So if, if we, we're gonna be sending out letters and saying, hey, would you guys like to, you know, be participants, or would you like to vote on this? If we get fifty percent of the cost sharing between the city and the property owners, the cost per parcel will be about a hundred and eighty dollars for the calming device. That's option one, and, and then if, if we go with option two, it'll be three hundred and eighty dollars per, per tax parcel. So we all agreed that we would send out mailers initially for the option two group to find the citizens willing to continue with the, the process. We, we feel like if they, if we do option two, you know, our, our threshold would be lower, and we'd get more participation, participation, and, and might get this to go through, but we'll, we'll have to see how that goes. So I'll have more briefing zones on this as we get a little further down the road, and that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we're, we're going to be actually going into an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of that applicant for public employment. I'm gonna give us until eight fifteen. I never give us enough time this time. I'm gonna give us till eight fifteen to go into this executive session, so until then, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. meeting. We are, I'm going to open back up this Lacey City Council meeting. We just came from an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. Before we go on to boards, commissions, and community reports, is there a, a motion to discuss that?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor and HR department to negotiate a contract with Rick Walk to be our interim city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries, and we'll get started on that as soon as possible. Thanks. Onto boards, commission, and community reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
I do not have a report either.
And Councilmember Cox.
I have two reports. The first is the Regional Housing Council, which last met on October the 26th. We had a presentation on the, what's called the Franz Anderson Proposal. This is land that Olympia and Thurston County purchased, half of which is to be tiny houses,
Do we know how much Olympia or Tombwater are contributing?
I can't cite you chapter and verse. I can get the figures for you. I know the county is at about three and a half. Tombwater, I think, is at 550,000. I can't remember the Olympia figure. 500? Okay. Because they've put, already put quite a bit, yeah, so.
So, I'm not sure if we want to have this conversation right now about, you know, this is something that we've been talking about sort of behind the scenes for a little bit. You know, this council for, at the beginning of our ARPA process, was committed to, you know, trying to build permanent supportive housing, hopefully region-wide, and we did, I sent out a letter to the other jurisdictions stating that, that, you know, we are in a permanent supportive housing crisis right now. We need available rooms so we can move people out of encampments that we've seen, and I think we've come, we're in the process of getting there with, I know what this council knows about the state's interest in purchasing a hotel here locally and converting to permanent supportive housing, and that's going to be quite the process to go through that as well. You know, I, I'm in favor of building more permanent supportive housing. I think the color of the money, you know, is, whether it's ARPA funds or reserves, which is where the other, probably the other source, what we're looking at. I'm, I'm in favor of supporting the building of more permanent supportive housing, wherever that is, because I think it's extremely important for our community. I think this is an important project, and, you know, I think there is a lot of details between now and when the project actually is going to go out for bid, and so on, so forth, but I am comfortable with that three and a half million dollar number, and how, where it comes from, I think is less important at the moment, but I'm pretty comfortable with that number. Councilmember Greenstein?
I mean, I'm generally supportive of the concept and of the dollar amount, but need a lot more detail before I would be willing to take a vote to commit any Lacy dollars. I just, I just don't have anywhere near enough information at this point.
Yeah, and that's what's, Rick, can you maybe fill us in a little bit on this? What's so difficult about this is it's all in conceptual right now, because the actual project, numbers, who's going to run it, all that is, is going to, something that's going to have to go out for a process. What the-
Doesn't that usually happen before you commit money?
Well, what, what, what they're doing, what they're trying to do right now is, is saying, what is the local match going to be in order to go after the grant funding that's going to need to build this, right? We don't, that's the little, the money that we're talking about is, is not going to be able to build the project. What that, what the money that we're talking about is going to be the local match that's going to go after the state or federal funding to build the project, and that's where we're at, Rick.
And we can bring back a presentation to give you a little bit more information how that process works, but the idea is that the commitment of dollars is for putting together an RFP to attract a private developer or nonprofit that is experiencing building permanent supportive housing, for them to look at that project, and then that, whoever is aware that RFP would then go after state dollars or federal dollars, which would be low income tax credits or something like that, using the local jurisdictional commitments as local leverage for competing in that low income tax credit notice of action, or notice of funding availability process. And so, it's really a first step to attract the developer that would then apply for those state fundings, and using those local dollars to leverage to be more competitive in that, that funding cycle. But we can bring back more information about that and the project, and how this has developed, so you have a clear understanding of the local roles, the financial dollar commitments from the local jurisdictions, and then that process going forward.
Yeah, let's, let's try to get that done in a work session here as soon as we can. What's nice in this circumstance is that they already own the land, and so they'll be giving the land over to the developer as a part of the overall package to build the permanent supportive housing, so.
And that's, that's part of, as is correct, that Tombwater's, they're making their 550,000 of ARPA dollars, Olympia the same amount, plus that Olympia and the county also purchased the land in order to make this happen as well. That's part of that commitment, too.
Great.
Hey, Rick, for clarification, do we need a decision, or in terms of timeline, before December 14th? Is that the date that's out there?
No, because I think we have, I mentioned to the regional tech team that this is going to be a conversation, it's going to occur, occur through the budgetary process, and that sometime in December would be the point in time there'd be a potential for a commitment letter for a funding amount.
Okay, we're good there. All right. Another concept that they're talking about, and this proposal came from top leadership in the county health department, is to create a task force similar to our hazardous weather task force. This one would be, the purpose would be to coordinate when homeless camps are, I hate to use the word swept, but cleared, people relocated. You know, the, the health department leadership is concerned about standardizing how we do this, best practices, trying to minimize harm both to the people and to the area they've been living in, and their possessions. So, obviously, this is going to take some money as well to create this and sustain it, but I wanted to let you know that this, this is being looked at, and I personally support it. I think, no matter how well intentioned we are, when you try to relocate a group of people who have been living out in the elements, there's going to be chaos, and there's going to be issues, and I think that, that putting more thought and coordinated effort into this will make it as, hopefully as good as it can be. It's never a happy thing when that happens. We also approved a governance structure and a process for recruiting and nominating people to the two advisory boards that will serve the Regional Housing Council. One is Funding and Housing Group, and, I'm sorry, I've just kind of lost my thread there, but anyway, those two groups will serve as, as advisory on that. And then, last night, I covered the intercity transit authority meeting for Robin, and it was a pretty full meeting. We adopted the 2021 annual report, as well as the 2022 through 2027 transit development plan. Just a quick word about that plan is they're, they're still trying, but not quite managing, to bring service up to pre-COVID pandemic levels. Like everybody, they're struggling to get enough staff to make the, you know, have enough operators to sustain the schedule, and so, they've got a new class of drivers coming in for training, and they're just building solely, rebuilding, I guess is a better word for it. We also conducted public hearings on the 2023-2028 draft strategic plan and the 2023 draft budget. We approved a memorandum of understanding between intercity transit and the International Association of Machinists District Lodge 160 for a one-year period. This would extend the existing contract for a year through December 2023, providing for a general wage increase of five and a half percent. And then, lastly, the new administration and operations building is finally ready, and we're all invited to go and tour it on November 10th. It'll be from 2:00 to 4:00, and the general manager promises there'll be refreshments on every floor of the three floors, so you can just eat your way to the top and enjoy the building. I've, I've been through a couple of hard hat tours there, and it, it really is a very cool, well-designed building that we might draw some ideas from for our new police station. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Councilmember Kunkel?
Super quick. Two reports for, one for Lacy South Sound Chamber. We have a wonderful event coming up November 12th called Zip, Saber, and Shop at the Lacy Community Center, and there will be local artisans, small businesses, and some great people there with great gift ideas for the holidays. And then SWAC met on the second. Some of the highlights for our budget presentation, we do have a lot of capital improvements going on for the next several years for the work, and for improving accessibility with the transfer stations. We also briefly covered our work plan for next year, and towards the end of November this month, the staff will be meeting with our county commissioners on the proposed draft for the compost procurement ordinance, and if they come to a conclusion and a consensus, there'll be a move on to public hearings. That's it.
With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Before, before I adjourn, I had this memory that showed up on today on my social media that said, 13 years ago today, I was elected to the Lacy City Council. 13 years. I have no idea where the time has gone, but, yeah, to my beard, that's for sure. So, with that little bit of nostalgia, we've reached the end of our agenda, and without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.